Good afternoon. We will begin with prayer and pledge. Our prayer will be led by Councilman Copeland, followed by Councilman Williams, with the Pledge of Allegiance. For those who would like to participate, pay, I'm sorry, please do so.
If you would bow your heads. Kind Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for another opportunity for us to come together as a city to meet on behalf of the greatness of our great city. Father, we ask that you, as council members, that you would touch each of us, that you will give us wisdom, guidance, and knowledge as we sit here to come together to make decisions for our great city. Father, we thank you for our citizens who have decided to join us tonight. Thank you that we have an opportunity to be heard and for them to be heard. Lord, we ask that your grace will be with us, that your mercy may be with us as we work towards a greater tomorrow. Father, I ask that you touch the bereaved families in our city, God. I ask that you just watch over this great city. Father, even the demonic strongholds that will try and cause murder and violence, Lord, we speak peace. We ask that we have peace in this city in the name of Jesus. We trust your word and we trust that you have a destiny for our city and we will not allow the destructions of the enemy to get us off our paths. We will stay focused, we will stay committed for what you have called this great city to be. We pray this in your son's Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me say good evening to everyone. Good evening. This is a public meeting and the audience, I ask that you remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interruption, or any disruption during the meeting. It is a reminder, city council members, please put your phone on vibrate or silence. Audience, we can't take your phone, but please put yours on silent as well. Is our fire marshal here? Are we at capacity?
We're right at capacity right now.
Okay. So. Okay. If you're wondering why I ask that question is because we can only have so many in here at one given time. It is not to say anybody has to go, but you would be put in an overflow. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the roll call. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia, present. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Protam Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have nine members present and zero absent.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that takes us to announcements. I do have one. I want to remind everyone that the council minutes, which are on consent agenda, that's item number one, they've been revised to state that Councilmember Lamar Sylvia offered the prayer rather than Mayor Moore. And next on our agenda, we have a proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of the Exchange Club of Saginaw.
Do we have any representatives? If so, John Millen, please step forward, you and any guests that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. Here's my guest, right on time.
So let me do this first. Let us read you the proclamation. You come up and sign as normal. You've not been going that long that you've forgotten, sir. And then we'll shake hands and then you speak, okay?
Thank you.
City of Saginaw proclamation. Whereas the Exchange Club of Saginaw, Michigan, chartered on March 22, 1921, will celebrate its 100th anniversary in 2021. And whereas the Exchange Club of Saginaw exemplifies the best traditions of our exchange organization, actively participating in the programs of service of the National Exchange Club and making invaluable contributions to the lives of the citizens of Saginaw, including the prevention of child abuse and working with our local CAN council. And whereas the National Exchange Club and the Michigan District enthusiastically recognize and acknowledge the selfless contributions of service made by the members of the Exchange Club of Saginaw and support for local organizations to address the needs of our community youth. And whereas the National Exchange Club celebrates the Exchange Club of Saginaw for its distinguished 100-year history and eagerly anticipates their future impact on the Saginaw community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, along with council members and citizens of Saginaw, express sincere thanks and appreciation to the members of the Exchange Club for all the contributions made in the true spirit of exchange towards the betterment of our community during these past 100 years. And be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be presented to the Exchange Club of Saginaw, Michigan, with best wishes for continued success in future endeavors. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 11th day of October in the year of our Lord, 2021. Signed, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, City of Saginaw. Councilmembers Michael D. Balls, Mayor Protam, Annie Bench, George Copeland, Jr., Michael Flores, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Ostache, Autumn Mel Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II. Also signed by Timothy Morales, City Manager.
Come up if you like. We don't fight.
Thank you very much, Mayor Moore, council members, manager Morales. I want to take a moment and introduce the others standing here with me. You're looking at past presidents and future presidents of the Exchange Club of Saginaw. Mr. Ernst Wuchert, our president-elect, Jennifer Sweeney, a regional vice president on our national board and a past president of our club, Catherine Martinez, our most selfless volunteer, been with the club 15 years, and some of you know her from her work with Child and Family Services. I'm just going to take a moment to introduce you to a little bit about what the Exchange Club of Saginaw does as a part of the National Exchange Club and as part of this community. Our national motto is "America's Service Club." And what exchange clubs do in their particular city can be very different, but it is all tied to service to their communities. We have four main tenants we work under. We are promoters of community service and whatever shape that takes, Americanism, this is also including our support for veterans organizations. In particular, our national partner, Veterans Matter, we work to end homelessness for veterans. Our other national program is child abuse prevention, our local partner is the CAN council, but that is our national program also, and youth programs. One of the most important, which is what we call our ACE Award. And this is a scholarship program for youth who have overcome challenges in their academic and personal lives and shown what they can become. Our most recent national winner of our ACE Award was from our southwest Michigan area. So it comes very close to home for us. Here in Saginaw, some of the things we do that you may have noticed and some that kind of hide behind the scenes, we support numerous local charities and I like to think of us as a foundational fundraiser. When I say you may not notice what we do when local charitable groups come before this council with requests for community development block grant funds, one of their requirements is to show their local support, matching funds from the community. We are quite often a part of that. We support mustard seed shelter, major courts for minors. These are all part of the programs that also receive community development block grant funds and other major foundations here in Saginaw, look to see that the community is supporting them in other ways. Our volunteerism comes out in Memorial Day Parade, Flag Day, and we have a couple of programs, Give a Kid a Flag, and we are also part of the Veterans Day program at the Saginaw County Veterans Memorial Park, which we helped provide seed money for some many years ago, before I was part of the club. Some of these people were part of that. Connected directly to the city and the rest of Saginaw County, we have the honor of hosting the Fireman of the Year luncheon every year. That's in two weeks from tomorrow. And we also host a Police Officer of the Year award ceremony every spring. And as I mentioned earlier, our national partner is CAN council on child abuse. Another program we do that is kind of behind the scenes, but we're looking to make a couple of dedications this year are Freedom Shrines. This is a program that was started and really took off with the bicentennial of the United States. The Exchange Club provides a display of important documents in the nation's history to public buildings, often schools. We have one in Zilwaki, right in their city council chamber. And this includes like the Declaration of Independence, the Emancipation Proclamation, surrender documents from World War II, very important events in this country. I believe Washington's either inaugural speech or his speech when he left office is one of the documents made in fact similarly. And they make a lovely display on, oh, a wall about that size. Our weekly meetings, we invite other local organizations to speak to us. Some of the ones we donate to, others are informational. We like to know what's going on in our community. And as you can see from the people standing with me, we are leaders in our community. We are business owners, business managers, former city councilmen occasionally, a former police chief of Saginaw is a past president of our club, Don Cusell. So we reach out, we want people to come. We find that people's public service doesn't end with their day job and doesn't end when they retire. They want to serve. Everything we do is volunteer. We ring bells for the Salvation Army at Christmas, so we are everywhere. And I want to thank you very much for this honor, for recognizing us, for what we do for the city and what the city does for us gives us a chance to serve.
Mayor, we are now at public input.
Welcome to those who have signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clear so we don't miss what you have to say. You will be called to the podium by the clerk, the city clerk. Speakers will have three minutes, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure you cover your main point. Remain, reminder that I want everyone to remain courteous and respectful to the members of the public and to those watching on SG TV and to the council so that we can give serious considerations to your concern. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker tonight is Tim Fritch.
Hello, my name is Tim Fritch. What I'm here to inquire about is water bills. As a property owner in the city of Saginaw, we have our rental agreements clearly signed and we turn in the affidavits as we're asked to do. The tenant comes in, pays the deposit, gives her ID. On the lease, it clearly says on page one of the agreement that the lease will continue on a month-to-month basis until either party terminates by giving a 30-day notice. The government has said it's okay to turn off the service for non-payment. However, the water department has decided not to do so because of the backlash on social media, as I was told by the water department. Why should this bill become the property owner's burden because the city won't shut off the water? Why is the city not making the tenant accountable and why is the property owner held to a higher Without investors, many tenants would be homeless. Not everyone can qualify for a bank loan to buy a house. The rental agreement was signed and turned into the water department and is a binding contract. Why is the city not recognizing this? And also, we did turn in, as per the request of the water department, a notarized affidavit. We did everything by the book and because it says that the lease expired on February 28th, that's what they're trying to hold this to as opposed to the first paragraph where it says term about the 30-day notice. So as far as I'm concerned, this is still a legally binding contract. In this case, this particular tenant has a bill for over $1,100 and just for the record, was not affected by the whole COVID and everything else, did not miss a day of work, worked in the medical field, and here we are. Thank you.
Thank you. The appropriate staff will get with you. Mr. Fritch, I hope I'm saying it right. Mr. Fritch, the appropriate department head will get with you and they'll report back to council.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're so welcome.
Our next speaker is Marcus Mohammed.
Good evening to the mayor, city council, citizens of Saginaw. I am Brother Marcus, the co-founder of Peacekeepers here in Saginaw. We have 34 chapters throughout the United States, including Trinidad and the UK. And I've come today to present to you the founder of all the men of Peacekeepers. He's here and I want to introduce him to you all and I want to yield the rest of my time to him. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dennis Mohammed.
Greetings and peace, everyone. I'm very honored to address this august body of men and women whose focus is to try to change the quality of life of this great community. My name is Dennis Mohammed, the founder of Peacekeepers Global Initiative. We have 34 chapters, one in London, England, and two in Tobago and Trinidad. It's a 20-year-old initiative and what we've done, I have my professional experience as trained law enforcement. I recognize that crime and violence is a direct result of unmet social needs. And if we know that crime and violence is a result of unmet social needs, then law enforcement are not social workers. The community has to take responsibility of itself to help and work with law enforcement to change the quality of life. So we got civilians here in the community. We started our chapter, this is our 34th chapter in Saginaw, and our 33rd is in Flint, Michigan. And we have Peacekeepers who are private citizens that we train and give them six training components to help them to work with law enforcement to be a visible deterrent in the community. As you see, I have on a shirt that says, "I'm present for peace." I'm not present for violence, I'm not present for controversy. So the Peacekeepers Global Initiative, we do not have no differences between people of religion, color, ethnicity, or gender. Peacekeepers are peacekeepers. These are men and women who want to change the quality of life and be present for peace. What we do, one time a week, one hour a week, we call it the Hour Power, all of the community that we train, put on this shirt, goes out into some of the depressed communities and for one hour will be present for peace and we engage our youth. We don't talk at them, we talk to them. We believe that one of the most important parts is to get them to buy into helping to make the quality of community safe for their own. So I'm very honored to address you. We're in the city, we have over maybe 15 here in Saginaw, we got about 30 in Flint, and we did this in a two-month period. So we're looking forward to working with this community. I'm going to be Helping Minister, Marcus, to be able to make sure that this initiative and the brand lives up to its reputation and be present for peace. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Audrey Beatty.
Thank you. Been away for a while, but I've returned. Returned and I have resigned within myself to become more active in this community. I, before I left, I heard about a nice amount of funding to be coming to this community. And I was impressed. I was really proud to hear that. And then as I began to reflect over it, I'm wondering just what exactly the parameters, the policies and the guidelines were for that massive funding. I haven't had a chance to read the materials that I've been able to gather, but I intend to do that. And one of the things that I would like to emphasize and to impress upon this community is that whatever the guidelines and so forth that they allow and permit, I want to see that Saginaw becomes a massive effort to effect change that is meaningful, especially on our east side of the river. There are many things, we have many issues, and I had a handout prepared for tonight, but I wasn't able to get the copies in time. But I just want to impress upon everybody that we are going to work together to affect meaningful change in this community. We are not going to be, it doesn't matter if you don't like me, if you don't love me, it doesn't matter. We just must learn to work together. And these funds must be accounted for, that we must have a system of accountability so we'll know where every dollar goes because we want to see some meaningful change in this community. There are so many areas that need attention. And I am myself personally, you know, who is she? Okay, I gave my heart to Saginaw, Michigan over 40 years ago when Reuben Daniels, Marty Stark, Reverend Austin, Tom Woods, they approached me. I left GM after almost seven years of service to dedicate my energies because they could not find a black man to take that position that Reverend Leon Sullivan wanted to guide the OIC program in this town. I accepted that. He said, "Audrey, if you do that, you'll be helping Saginaw." Well, I did that many years ago. I still don't get a pension, but I want you to know, I was committed to Saginaw then and in my more than 80 years of being on this earth, I want to be involved again. I'm just going to leave it at that. I'll come back again.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Angelina Harrington. Not here? Let's go with Stacy Byron.
Hi, I'm Stacy Byron. I'm the executive director at Hoyt Nursing and Rehab Center, and I want to discuss essential workers. Everyone at our rehab center is an essential worker. So with the wage passer that went, just got re-upped for another year, excluded dietary, laundry, kitchen, maintenance, all our admin staff, that every single one of us is essential. Back in November, I was on the job for six days and we had a COVID outbreak, big COVID outbreak. And who was one of my first people here? Nikki, where is she? Nikki, she beat me to the facility. And we did, I think, 20, well, 15 room moves initially, and it continued. So every single one of my staff members, 150 of them, are essential. Throughout this pandemic, there's only been 89 that's went through this whole year and a half. 61 of them are nonessential according to the government here. So I'm looking for the City of Saginaw to consider all of the essential workers, everyone at my facility, as essential and to allocate some of the ARPA funds for all of us who have been missed. We're also taking care of, you know, just think about all of your loved ones that you're trusting in our hands. We have 85 residents at the facility right now. We're going through a lot of changes with, you know, who wants to put their loved one in a facility right now and we can't visit all the time. So our census is dropped, we're building that back up, but I just want everyone to, you know, take a think, think about this, your loved ones and all of the people here that have supported and took care of them in a time of need. We have laundry, doing hair. I've worked in every single department of our facility in the last year that I've been there, and it goes way back because I worked there 16 years ago as well. But I'm working side by side with them, washing dishes, doing laundry, coming in at 3:00 in the morning if someone calls off. Every single one of us is essential here and I thank every one of you. Thank you.
And I am doing that because, point of order, earlier I stated, no obnoxious behavior. We are in a public meeting, we are being viewed on television. I understand you're excited, but please refrain from that, please, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicole Flores.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Flores. I've lived in Saginaw my whole life. For the last six and a half years, I've worked in housekeeping at Hoyt Nursing and Rehab. I started working in the nursing home field because I wanted to help people. Whether we are dietary aides, cooks, housekeeping, or maintenance staff, we work together along with our CNAs and nurses to give our residents the best possible care. We are all a team. My job cleaning, disinfecting all the rooms, facility, and surfaces got even more important during the pandemic. But it's not only what we do to keep our facility clean and germ-free, since March of 2020, nursing homes haven't been able to have many visitors. So staff like me have become our residents' adopted families. We go above and beyond. When they needed more help, I took online CNA courses on top of my housekeeping duties. I even volunteered to work in our COVID unit so others with small children didn't have to. Support staff like me were working six to seven days a week, working to exhaustion, same as our nurses. My family was very worried and concerned for my safety. The past year and a half has been very scary and hard for us all, but we kept showing up because our residents knew they needed us. That's why it's so upsetting to hear that when the state renewed a raise for the direct care providers in nursing homes, but didn't include staff like me. I'll get here in just a second. We have walked in the same doors right along with our nurses and CNAs. We all risked our lives going into COVID rooms. We'd been there the entire time. We put our lives on the line. We were called heroes, but we aren't treated or paid like heroes. And the low pay is driving away many workers, leading to high turnover rates, short staffing. This hurts our residents and they deserve better. Workers like me deserve a raise and fair pay. It's wrong that the state left us out from the pandemic pay. We're here tonight because we need our city leaders to show us that they value and respect what we do for our community. The City of Saginaw has the opportunity to do what the state did not and use the federal funds to pass pandemic pay for nursing home support staff like us. You can put these funds to work in exactly the way they were meant to be used to provide relief to people like us who have been hit the hardest by this pandemic. This raise will help workers stay in the field and care for our families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Oliveras.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been the president of Saginaw my whole life and I am an essential worker as well. I work at Hoyt right along with Nikki and everybody else, and I feel like we deserve, you know, the same pay as everybody else. We did, you know, everything else they all did too. And I said throughout this whole pandemic, the only thing I got through this pandemic was COVID and that's it. So, and I still got up every day and went to work and, you know, did what I was supposed to. So all I'm asking here is for you guys to help us out because we're helping, you know, others too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Catherine Davis.
Hello, council. My name is Catherine Davis. I'm a worker of Hoyt I'm a worker of a Hoyt nursing home. My coworkers know me as Cookie. I've been a resident of Saginaw for quite a few years. I'm SEI Union Stewart. I've been 29 years in healthcare field, and I'm here today to ask you to help us so we can help our people. Now, we worked all through the pandemic, every day. It's exhausting to get up every morning and work every day in a pandemic where you have short staff. You're doing your job and everybody else's job also. So I know that the state gives the city funds to give out to people that you think are essential workers, but evidently we were not included in that. For the second year now, I haven't got anything through all the pandemic. There's so many of us that was left out, put in the dark, in the shadows, and you all called us heroes, the state called us heroes. We hear it all the time on the news, every place. So we're just asking if you feel like we are heroes to, you know, to do something about it. Make us a part of everything else that you're giving everyone else. Don't just leave us out. We work hard. It's exhausting. We worry about what we have to take home to our families also. You know, we care about our children. We want to feel like we meant something. So we take care of the most vulnerable people, you know, like my administrator said, I do hair, I'm laundry. I'm also an aide, been there 29 years. I do hair. I can do basically anything that they need me to do, and I'm there for it, sick, no sick. I didn't get sick through the whole pandemic, you know, but I'm willing to get up because I enjoy what I do. I care about the people, and I'm just asking you to look at us like you say we are heroes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alberto Tenneyuki. Alberto Tenneyuki? Is Alberto here, chief?
I don't think so. I don't think so, Madam Clark.
Let's go to Matthew Carpus.
My name is Matthew Carpus. I'm president of the Saginaw Police Command Association. I've spoken to this council about exit interviews conducted on departing members of the Saginaw Police Department. We were asked to come up with proposals and present it to the manager so we could meet and try to tackle this retention problem. With only having assumptions of so many coworkers, of why so many coworkers were leaving, we asked to see the exit interviews. What we were initially provided was a list of officers who have left since 2016 and the reason why they left, termination, resignation or retirement. This list provided no real insight into why officers left. We then specifically requested the exit interviews, which were conducted through a Department of Justice grant, and only then did we get the real exit interviews. As we suspected, there are multiple reasons officers have been leaving our department. However, it appears this council has been misled into believing the only reason our officers are leaving is because of low pay pensions and retirement healthcare, what I will call overall compensation. It's a tactic of trying to paint our members as being greedy. In a city that just a few meetings back had a proclamation for Cesar Chavez, in a city that had its heyday during a time of thousands of strong union jobs, it's disheartening to be paid in such a negative light. When our officers leave for other departments, which most likely have better compensation, it's easy to sit back and say, well, those officers clearly left for better paying jobs. But if our officers only care about compensation, I ask, why did the officers come here in the first place? Why are some leaving after 10-plus years on the job? For that matter, why is anyone still working here at all? Officers don't come or stay here for compensation. To say so is like saying the council members serve because they want to get rich off the stipends they earn each meeting. But there comes a point where the officers feel like they're hitting their heads on the wall. Eventually, the calling to serve this community is outweighed by poor leadership and unfair and unethical treatment by administration. Sooner or later, officers are fated to look at their compensation and ask, is it really worth it when I can do better elsewhere? Other city departments are being painted in a similar manner, that their employees are also leaving for better pay elsewhere. I can't help but wondering if these other unions are facing similar underlying issues. To reiterate, it appears this council is being hoodwinked to believe our officers are only leaving because of pay and benefits. The truth is in the real exit interviews, which I implore this council to look at and insist some actions are taken. We had a young promising officer here not long ago, a school resource officer who loved working with the kids in the city. He had a master's degree, ran the youth police academy, was Officer of the Year for one of his five years he worked here, was well-liked and respected by his peers, and by all accounts should have had a promising career here. His departing words, departing words were, you can have bad pay or bad leadership, you can't have both.
Our next speaker is Robert Adams.
Hello, my name is Rob Adams, and I'm a police officer here in the city, and I've been employed here for 12 years. I also serve as the vice president of our patrol union. I'm here to tell you about our low staffing levels and the lack of response to them. We are at an all-time low with the number of sworn officers here at the police department. I just want to warn everybody that there's been several neighboring police departments in the area that are planning on filling some vacant positions at the beginning of next year. I know this because several of my friends slash coworkers have applied and/or will be applying. As you know, we've been losing officers at an alarming rate within the last few years, and it's because they don't trust police administrators, city hall management, and quite frankly, Saginaw is a stressful place to work, out there in the street and what's happening inside the department. These friends that have applied for these other departments are qualified to work there. These aren't the officers or detectives that just got hired in Saginaw. These are the senior officers and detectives that have made great community ties over the years, and these are the ones that are solving the crime in Saginaw. These guys have held on as long as they could, and they love the work they do here, but sometimes you just have to jump from the sinking ship, in their words. My case is a little bit different from these guys. I came out number, I recently came out number one on a recent promotional list, and I'm set to get promoted sometime in the next few months, which has been a great career goal of mine. Talking to some of my friends that have already left the police department to go join other police departments, they talk about how they enjoy their new job, and it makes me kind of jealous, and it causes me to think whether or not I should be looking somewhere else. I do not want to leave because I've made some great relationships here, and I enjoy my job and my daily duties. But this causes me to think, will we even have a Saginaw Police Department in five to 10 years at the rate we are going? I've heard the administrators here answering some of the council members' questions, and it makes me think whether they are telling you the entire truth about these exit interviews that were presented, and when the council members ask these administrator questions, they give answers, but we still haven't seen any changes. My friends are looking, are still looking to leave because the manager and the chief have not made any of these changes. If they leave, that will leave a large vacancy of experience in these officer ranks, and if these senior guys leave, who's going to be left to mentor the new young guys? We all sit here and talk about how bad the problem is, and there are no proposals by any admin about what they are going to do to fix this issue. It is not the union's or my job to fix this issue. We have brought up the issues in the police department and the roots to these problems, but yet nothing has changed. These administrators are not fixing the problem, and the citizens, businesses and us officers are the ones suffering. And just to update you, since we have met here last, since you've all met in these chambers two weeks ago, there have been four non-fatal shootings and three more homicides in two weeks. Thank you.
Mayor, our next round of business is council remarks.
Council persons, remember, you have three minutes as well. Please get your thoughts and your comments in within the three minutes. You will be timed. We will begin tonight with Councilman Copeland.
All right, good evening, everyone. Mine is going to be very quick. One, thank you to all of our public speakers who are here this evening. I do want to make a comment based on what I've heard this evening. As a council member, I've been hearing the back and forth between our police department and our city manager. Personally, I don't want, I, the next time I hear something about this, I would like a plan as well, just because this is embarrassing. We have the news, and every week we're going back and forth, back and forth. I don't like that because Saginaw, that's not who we are. We're professional, and all that we do, we do it in excellence. All right, so while I'm really here, what I want to use my moments where I have some guests this evening, I have some special guests, and I want to share this time with them. If they can stand, I'm going to call their name. I have four young entrepreneurs from our city of Saginaw. These are young people between the ages of six and 16. First, I have Ms. Jasmine Robbins. Can you hear me? Oh, okay, too loud? Oh, okay.
You can say their names, I'm sorry.
All right. I have Jasmine Robins, and I did check with the manager just to make sure all of this was okay to do.
If it's okay, I'm okay with it.
Okay. I have Ms. Jasmine Robbins, who's the CEO of Sweet Lips by Jazz LLC, which offers a variety of accessories for girls. Jasmine is a 12-year-old seventh grader who attends SASSA and is currently enrolled in the ELA Global Studies Program. She launched this business in July 2020. She has hair scrunchies and eight candy-scented lip glosses, bubble gum, cotton candy, tropical smoothie, grape popsicle, green apple birthday cake, lemonade and orange sherbet. I also have Shelby Delos Santos, who founded, and, okay, she founded and created Shelby, Shelby Shop. She's 12 years old, and she's a resident of the city of Saginaw and attends White Pine. She launched her business in 2019. She's a firm believer that it is important to support small businesses within her area and give back to the community. I have Talia Heredia Gonzalez, who's a young aspiring entrepreneur of her own small business. She's an eighth grader at White Pine. She's a proud and strong Mexican-American heritage, where her roots and culture drove her to passion to cook and bake, and she continues with her ambition to make small business important. And then I have Savaya Jackson. She's a 12-year-old author, who's the owner of Exploring Bath Bombs. She attends White Pine Middle School, and she is also an author, and her two goals is to position her business as a big brand store and to collaborate with more businesses. And then I have Ms. Rhonda Webb, who's the Director of Kids Rule, which is a nonprofit that she started in 2016, who she spent time developing these young business owners. We have a lot of things going on in our city, but I at least wanted to show this evening that we have some young people, and we have people in our community that is taking them under their wing and strengthening and encouraging them because this is our future of our city. These are just four young people, but I believe there are going to be more in our city to be here with us. Thank you so much for being my guest. Thank you for being here this evening.
Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia. I got it right.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I would also like to thank all of the speakers that we had this evening, and I'd like to say to the essential workers, you are definitely essential as far as I'm concerned, and probably if not of us, that you are essential workers. I had a chance to be at Holden Jones for the, with the police department on, I believe it was the 29th. It was so informative. I had never been to one, I'm going to more because the name kind of made me think it was different. It was very informative. Met a lot of people at Holden Jones. I really, really enjoyed the conversations back and forth and from the community. Also, with the young men from the Peacekeepers, I don't know if they're out in the hall or what, I had a chance to meet with them on a few occasions, and just to elaborate on some of the work that I know that they have personally done, is that I got a phone call in regards to what have, what could have been major murders in this city. I'm just cut to the chase. And through myself and a few other people, and through the Peacekeepers, they were able to deter that and bring peace to these two separate groups of people. So I do know the work that they are doing, and thank you very much, and you all have a great day, and thanks for coming, City Council.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Good evening. Thank you to all of our public speakers that came forward tonight. Also, it's great to see our four young entrepreneurs that showed up. It's great to see the young faces in the audience as well, but congratulations to you all on your business ventures. I would like to say that I've attended, I believe, maybe three or four front porch roll calls that the Saginaw Police Department put on, and this is what Councilwoman Sylvia was talking about. They're great to see, especially in certain areas. Mackinac has a very unique, it's almost like a little neighborhood house that I didn't even know was over in their area. But to see the police department out involved with the community is always a beautiful thing. I'm definitely pro-community policing. I wish we had the staffing to do it. Speaking of the staffing issues, I agree with a fellow councilman. At this point, this is becoming embarrassing. I think Officer Soon to Be Sergeant Adams, you stated that it's not the union or patrol's responsibility, it's everyone's responsibility inside of a department, inside of a team. It is everyone's responsibility. As soon as we choose to put the accountability on one or another, we lose all the way around, all the way around. So at any level in any department, if we feel as though we're not important enough to be able to help make decisions, help make the situation better, we shouldn't be there. And, I mean, I don't want to lose anybody else, but come on, we got, we got to do better. We all have to, we all have to help each other. We are in, been going through a pandemic, going through this, going through that. We can't use that as an excuse. We cannot use that as an excuse. It is not solely on admin to fix every problem in a department. It's on everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, excuse me, Councilwoman Benz, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Good evening to everyone. I also would like to thank all of our public speakers for being here tonight. There are so many essential workers or people that we came to consider to be essential workers during the pandemic that definitely were overlooked and fell through the cracks, and their service to our community is definitely appreciated, and I am very disappointed that our state let them down in such a fashion. So I do appreciate hearing from them tonight. Over the weekend, we, the Saginaw Police Department and myself, hosted a gun drop-off. It was a gun and ammunition amnesty day, and I just wanted to thank the police department because we were able to get, I believe, give or take 28 weapons, I was loosely counting, dropped off between two different locations. One of those weapons was a loaded gun that was in a vacant field, and anybody could have found it, and fortunately, a responsible adult did and turned it in, but we didn't really know what to anticipate, but I am very grateful to our police department for being willing to put the event together at the last minute. We planned it within a month and advertised it for maybe two weeks. Police Chief Ruth and Tim were very supportive of putting it together, and I want to thank Sergeant Carpus and Lieutenant Volker, I'm hoping I'm getting their ranks right, for being there. It was really nice to have them both there, present at the event. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sarah.
Thank you. Oh, good evening, everyone. It is great to be back in the city of Saginaw. I took a march. I just want to share a couple of events coming up. October 16th is opening day, well, the Symphony and the Spirit Block Party, live music, food trucks, lots of events, so if you can make it out, please come out and support our Symphony and our Saginaw Spirit. Also, Saginaw Arson Watch is back this year. I hope to see all of my fellow council persons out there, starting at 5:00 PM at the Fire Training Center. We will have Arson Watch starting on 5:00 PM, October 30th. So hopefully I see most of you, but also the citizens, if you are interested. Arson Watch is a staple in the community during the Halloween festivities, but it also is to look out to make sure that nothing is going on in our city in addition to what is already happening. I also want to remind everyone that there are victim services available. We have a lot of hurt going on in our community. And also, if you know something, call Crime Stoppers. I serve on the board, and I can't stress it enough, the importance. If you don't say nothing, things do not stop. So please, take the time, either reach out to victim services if you are in need of it, or if you know something, call Crime Stoppers. Want to say congratulations to Detective Philip Graves, Officer of the Month. Congratulations to you, and I was also unable to attend the fire awards, but I heard great things about it, so congratulations to all of our firefighters that were honored that day. The last thing I just want to bring up, in probably the same sentiments as Councilman Copeland and Williams. in probably the same sentence sentiments as Councilwoman Copeland and Williams, is here we are again, about a month and a half later, still talking about it. It is embarrassing, but shame on us if we don't do anything, because it's time to stop talking and see what we can do to put in action. And it could be the, it's the Police Department at the table right now. Next month, it could be the Fire Department. The next month, it could be the Water Department. Doesn't matter what department it is, but it's time for us to start working together to find a solution. And I too would like to see a plan or some type of conversation to move forward to see how we can address it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Oste.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, and welcome, everybody, to the nice council meeting for yous that are here and watching at home. Um, Councilwoman Monique, thank you for bringing that up, and I know she's stuffed out right now, but, uh, thank you for the Peacekeepers and everything that you're doing in our city. I just learned a little bit more about what work they are doing here, and that is fantastic. I had the opportunity to attend the grand opening of the McNair and Coughlin Chess Park. If you have not had a chance to, to see this or the park itself, I encourage you to please go to fourteen oh one James Avenue and see what they have over there. It's a wonderful facility. Uh, there's a half-mile track, there's, um, things for the kids to do and a play area, and they even have like a little mini zip line, which I almost was gonna get on, but I had to take off. Um, Zoo Boo is going on again this year, so please see their Facebook page or their website, so they're running at from now to the end of the month. It's happening from ten AM till five on the weekends at the zoo. Uh, folks, I did see, uh, some information out there. If you're still having, uh, if you still need rent assistance, Mishda still has a Sarah program that is running, so more information there on their website or call them. Also, there's been some, um, advertisement for Rescue Ministries of Mid-Michigan. They are, once again, starting to put together items for their Thanksgiving meal, and they're looking for donations. So for two dollars and seventeen cents, that provides one meal for a person uh, in the city, in the community, and, and the needs that they have there for them. Um, I did have the opportunity to attend the, um, Firefighters Awards. It was a great event. Uh, congratulations to Fire Marshal Duran, and I'm probably gonna get his last name wrong, uh, Shuodolski, and I should be able to get that right, because I do have a Polish descent, but congratulations to him for, for his award. And just congratulations for everybody that, uh, got some sort of award that day, whether it was one of our firefighters or our citizens, because there are some real heroic events that do take place, uh, during the year that they've actually saved their families' lives. And, and I got a chance to hear about that, uh, when I was there. The other item we've been talking about with our police officers, and thank you, uh, once again, for all of your service to the city of Saginaw. And I say that from the bottom of my heart, because I had the opportunity to ride this weekend, um, with one of our officers here in the city. And I thought I would probably get done with that shift around midnight. Um, but there is so much information that you're learning that I stayed on for the whole twelve-hour shift. And if we hear a lot about what's going on, or I placed this phone call, or they didn't come, or it took an hour for them to get there, um, there truly is a lot of activity that is going on. And your night kinda starts out, we've got like one or two in the queue, and then it starts to come in with more. And then you're constantly prioritizing, because while we just had an armed robbery that we were at, and that took an hour, two, hour and a half, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I wanna give my condolences to all the families that lost a loved one due to gun violence this past week in the city of Saginaw. There have been three people. I had gone to the funeral of, uh, Xavier Claudio on Wednesday, and that will be the saddest experience that I've ever had in the city in my entire life. There were children crying over a young man that they lost, twenty-one years old, twenty-two years old, that left a two and a one-year-old, um, in the city with a single mother. I talked to Florina this morning. Um, these are high-stakes homicides. These are things that will change an entire community forever, and we need to do something about it. I had done a ride-along these past two Saturdays. Uh, I saw Bill out there this last Saturday. Um, I'm getting a better understanding of how unequipped the Saginaw City Police is when it comes to trying to perform their own duties. So thank you to Officer Rick, who is great at de-escalating situations and great at leadership when it comes to the younger people he has on his staff. Thank you to Officer Harris, who sang with Councilman Member Copeland unbeknownst to me, and who had turned down a job in West Bloomfield to serve our city. These are people that definitely care about our city. If we had double or triple the amount, we would be in a better place as a city ourselves. When it comes to essential workers, obviously, the people that take care of our most vulnerable residents, whether it be children, or whether it be, uh, folks that live in a nursing facility, you are essential workers. If you did not work when you originally had to during, to, due to the COVID pandemic, we wouldn't be in the position that we are currently. So I, I understand that you all are fire, sewer, water, police, whoever wants to say that they're an essential worker, we're welcome to look at that. But it is our responsibility that's laid out in the interim final rules to compensate people that have been working through this pandemic correctly. And not just call them heroes, but to do what we need to do to either incentivize people to enter their career field or to give them proper compensation that was overlooked by the state of, the, uh, state of Michigan. Uh, last, I am putting on a community event with Bobby DeLeon and the MAC Center with, um, hopefully some council members and the manager. It's gonna be on the thirtieth. We have to do it early, uh, because that's the day that MSU is gonna beat U of M, go green. And the manager is not gonna be in a place to speak on such complicated issues after that defeat. So we wanna do it early, so we don't have to, uh, and hopefully they're still coming. But we wanna make sure that people that have small businesses and have a stake in this community, uh, join us during that event.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Balls.
Thank you, Mayor. A good evening, citizens. I'd like to thank you all for coming to the meeting today. Uh, your voices have been heard, and we, hopefully, that some people would, you know, we do what we need to do to make things hap- better for everybody. But I, I want everybody to know that I did go to the Fireman Fighters Award. It was a beautiful event, and what I, the most, the best thing I think I got out of it, that they have a high school program for, uh, high school students, uh, junior and senior, to get involved with the Fire Department, where you will go to school for half a day and then work for the Fire Department for half a day. And then, after that, I think by the time you graduate, you will be almost a firefighter. If that's not a great opportunity for the citizens of Saginaw, I can't think of anything better than that. And I think they have a similar program like that in the police, with the police, where they can, uh, do some mentoring. The police can do mentoring. It's obvious to me that mentoring do work. We got a lot of problems in the city of Saginaw. We don't have a lot of jobs. We have a lot of, uh, family members, males who've been incarcerated. They can't come out and get a good job. And that leads to, uh, families with not adequate, uh, things in the household, and it create a lot of social problems. Just by seeing Ms. Webb here today, she's mentoring five young ladies, and all five of them have a business, and neither one of them is eighteen years old. Mentoring works. If anybody here, police, the city manager, uh, the financial people, anybody here, the council people, if you care about our citizens, get involved with our citizens. The best way to do that is get involved in a kid's life when they're young and mentor them. Mentoring don't mean nothing but men touring kids or women touring kids through life. Association brings about assimilation. It's obvious, since the community centers have been closed, that the kids hang with each other, and then they end up doing stupid things, and that's, you know, they're picking up a gun. And then we have all these issues with people, and you know what's going on after that. We got death and despair in our community. Uh, the Peacekeepers are out trying to do something about that. You know, I commend those guys. I commend anybody who wanna get involved in a young kid's life, because you can change it. It don't take a lot. I've been in the Big Brother and Sister Program for thirty-some years. I had one little brother get in some trouble one time. The police officer gave him a wedgie, no problem since. But out of all those guys, they all doing good. But I can tell you, and it is not, it's not that you gotta take them places and all that kinda stuff, just spend time with them. Kids need to see couples together and learn how couples get along with having some, some little difficulties and stuff like that, and they iron them out without having to have, have to have a drug or a knock-down drag-out behind the, the issue. I mean, me and my little brothers in Big Brothers Program, whatever I'm doing at the house, that's what they doing. If I'm cooking and cleaning, they gonna be cooking and cleaning. So it do work. So I invite anybody who care about these fathers we got, get involved in a kid's life. It'll change them. Just like this lady have done with these five young students here. Thank you, man.
Thank you. It's already been said. I'd like to thank all of our public speakers. Um, I will echo my fellow councilpersons as it relates to how we can and what we need to do with, uh, with the issues with our Police Department. Um, and I'd like to thank the workers who came. Um, I, I think that what we all do is, because I think everybody is essential. I'm not saying one group is better than the other. So I, I think we, we gotta work out how we gonna do whatever we gonna do, 'cause everybody is essential. Um, on update, Trick or Trunk is coming. So on my trick-or-treat, well, not mine, it is the Concerned Citizens of Saginaw. We will be at, uh, Bishop Campbell's Church on Sheridan, October the twenty-first, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, Trick or Trunk. Anyone listen to the sound of my voice, please come. And if you'd like to have a car, you can have a car. On that Sunday, the twenty-fourth, is the Sheriff's at Arthur Hill High School from two to four. So you've got Saturday, I'm sorry, Sunday, the, the Sheriff Department, Tuesday, Concerned Citizens on Sheridan. And then Thursday, you have, I keep wanting to call it Jane Street Clinic, but it's Great Lake Bay. They will be on Davenport. Anyone who wants to participate in any of these activities, please contact the necessary people to do so. I also attended a lot of events last week. Um, the Firefighters was quite rewarding. The chess tournament on Saturday, even though I don't know how to play. I do like the idea that they've got pieces almost as tall as me, and I have to shuffle the board to get there, so I do plan to learn. Um, so I can go up against somebody that plays, but not, not good. Not good, not good, not good. Um, the Saginaw, I said on August the fifth, I declared, "We taking our city back." I'm gonna keep telling y'all that. We taking our city back. We can no longer depend on, and I love the Police Department, I love the Fire Department, but we gotta step up as citizens. So I am encouraging everyone. I put us in a praying mode. On last Sunday, we went to Unity Park, Wicks Park, Vets Park, and Bolschus Park, and we prayed in the rain. That's how I always did. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at reports from the city manager.
Yes, sir.
So first, I do wanna, um, thank Councilwoman Bench, because she, uh, she did really, uh, plan and coordinate the Guns and Ammunition Amnesty Day. She texted, um, like she said, about a month ago, and asked if that was something that we could host. And I think, um, she did a lot of the work on organizing and get everything set up with, uh, Chief, so appreciate that. And I, uh, she probably mentioned that they did get at least twenty-eight guns and ammunition. So I think that was a, a great project, and hopefully we can do that again. And I think that gets to, um, what a few other councilmembers and I have talked about, and that's, um, it doesn't necessarily go into enforcement, but how do you get to root causes of crime?
Yes, sir.
And, um, we did have, uh, talk about some of that with, related to the ARPA funds. And I think there are opportunities, and I think that fits in with what you all identified uh, with, as your major cluster areas or buckets, however you wanna define that. But youth and family, I think, was one of the top ones. And, uh, that does go to the, um, I think, impacting those long-term, uh, projects where you can make a difference with kids. So appreciate that, um, project, and also, um, the discussion that I've had with a few councilmembers about that, and we do wanna continue that. Um, we are, uh, trying to set up some more opportunities for councilmembers to receive input, uh, from the public about the ARPA funds. You should have received an email from, uh, Vicky Davis in my office with some proposed dates where we can have an open house in this council chambers, and it's an opportunity for the public to come in and, um, talk a little bit with councilmembers. And, uh, we've been working with Councilman Lamar Sylvia and staff to put together another one-page survey that people could complete when they're at that type of meeting. Um, I've talked to the mayor and Councilman Flores about potentially doing, um, coffee with councilmembers to get that input. And, uh, just bringing up these ideas, because I did meet with, uh, some members of the public who did state that maybe they're not as comfortable coming to a formal council meeting and signing up and talking, but they would like to have an opportunity, uh, to sit down with councilmembers. And we, we can have evening meetings, uh, available as well. As, as Councilman Flores says, he, um, he's been working with Bobby DeLeon and, uh, set up that event at the MAC, and that's a Saturday. And, um, yeah, we're doing it earlier than day, because I, I probably won't have a voice left after I cheer how many touchdowns Michigan's gonna score on the spring. So we'll, uh, we'll do that before the game. And, um, the other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, the ARPA funds do provide an opportunity to make a community impact in a lot of different ways. Um, Councilman Lamar Sylvia also sent some photos that we did send copies to you of Unity Park. Um, sadly, that is, those photos, it could be taken at any number of our parks throughout the city, because we do have that kind of vandalism. We haven't been able to invest in parks for a number of years, or, or, or community centers, and I think that's where we go to, um, impacting the neighborhoods. Um, so we do have an opportunity. We'll, we'll get those items cleaned up, um, as quickly as we can with the staffing that we have. But I think that's something that we take a look at with, um, with ARPA money too, uh, whether it's from lost revenue or travel tourism categories. But how do we improve those neighborhood amenities that we have, uh, that are quality-of-life related? And with that, um, I do wanna mention a few individuals that have been doing that for a number of years. And, um, two of them were honored last week at the Chamber Awards Ceremony. And one is Evelyn McGovern, who worked, uh, for the city of Saginaw for twenty-plus years, I believe. And she's been working for almost as long, and Women of Colors. And that's an organization that does strive to make an impact in, in the life of youths in the city as well. And then the second one was, uh, Yoko Mosner, who has been working for, I think, as long as the Japanese Tea House and Cultural Center has been in the city. And, um, she was honored with an award there too. And I know she's, um, she's kinda passed the torch on to another individual who's working there, but I know she's still very involved. And we see people like that that come in the city and make a difference, uh, without, you know, having anything, uh, compensation other than the impact that they have on people's lives. So I wanted to recognize them, and then with that also, um, talk a little bit about the, the, um, the block party that, uh, that Councilwoman Scherzer mentioned, the Riverfront Saginaw Spirit Symphony season opener block party. So, um, we started talking about this in our Riverfront Saginaw Group maybe three weeks ago. And that's an organization that, um, it's not a five oh one C-three. It's a group of, uh, Mike Hanley actually started that group with about four or five of us. We're just interested in proving downtown and Old Town Riverfront in Saginaw. One of the first things we did was, um, we went to Midtown Detroit, because there's been a lot of Renaissance there. Um, and there's Midtown Detroit, Inc., which is a five oh one C-three that is involved in community development there. We learned through talking to them that we don't necessarily have, uh, the same advantages that that neighborhood had. Wayne State is in that neighborhood, uh, I think Detroit Medical Center. So those foundations contribute a lot there, and they do, um, they do a lot of development. And I'm sure that some of you have seen that, but they do, they purchase buildings, get them ready for development. Um, we do have that opportunity as well, but, uh, But when we were in our meeting about three weeks ago, the subject came up of what, what are we doing with the group? We can't necessarily develop buildings, but can we have some signature events that we can provide to the public? So I have to give a lot of credit for this event to the Saginaw Spirit and the Garber Family because they put this together in about two weeks' time. And it is, you know, you can buy tickets to the Spirit and the Symphony, but all of the events prior to that, starting at 4:30, are free to the public. They really focused on bringing things in for kids. They're having a magic show, live music outdoors. I think they're having two bands outdoors, food trucks, bounce houses, balloon, whatever you call it, the balloon show for kids. And several other things that are all open to the public. So really wanna thank the Saginaw Spirit and the Symphony for putting that together so quickly. And I think that's an example about, of people that are really interested in community and doing something special for them. I wanna thank them for putting that together. Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update.
Do we have any questions for the city manager?
I do. I do. Okay. Mr. Morales, you talking about the photos that I sent in, sent to the council. I asked anyone from the city, whatever department that that would be, have they gone to look at that? Cause a lot, a lot of it was like branches, big branches. Cause I know a lot of people in the community, they kinda take pride in that and they clean it up. But I'm sure they can't handle those larger items like that. That's why I submitted that information.
Yeah, we did send that to Phil Carwatt. So when, when the staff can get to it, they should be able to clean that up.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'd like to just add, Councilwoman Sylvia, there is an individual who adopted that park in Washington. And so I don't know if she's still, when, when the pictures came, I, I need to try to find out. Because she kept it up.
Right.
She did keep it up. So I don't just think that we totally just be not doing nothing. Cause people are actually adopting areas of the city right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
The point you just made is really, so how available is that information regarding adopting a park? Have we done any, as a city, have we done any marketing to different nonprofits? How often do we do that? And I'm glad, because I probably wouldn't know, so.
So generally, the neighborhood associations are aware of the ability to adopt a park. And well, you have, we do have a number of them that are already adopted. I think we have a council member who's involved in that, in the park in his neighborhood. So it's, it's pretty widely known among the neighborhood association. And some, some of the parks aren't adopted. I think in my neighborhood, Dindorfer is, I don't believe it's adopted, but it is. They do have an endowment for projects too. So we have that kind of arrangement as well where we can work, if there are donations, the city can work as the, kind of the general contractor for, for that. But, but it is, is very common.
And I can just go to the city's website, put in adopt a park in the search bar, and the application will come up for me?
We'll check on that. We'll make sure that it is, if it's not ours.
And I only wanna ask cause I'm thinking about my church. So I wanna know if I go, I wanna be able to tell them where to go to get that information.
Yep, yep. We'll make sure it's on the website.
You can go into Phil Carwatt Streets. Heather handles that. Cause I've got about three or four people who just adopted some parks and some areas in the business area. They wanna keep their area clean. So they actually have adopted around their businesses to keep it looking sharp. Any other questions? Hearing done, Madam Clerk.
Your next order of business is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city's webpage and on SGTV, Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving rules for exception.
Oweable support.
It's been doubly moved, doubly supported. Do we have any exceptions?
Yeah, I had two, Mayor, for number one and number five, please.
Are there any others? Second vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry. No, I didn't. I didn't mean that.
Okay. First item is number one, approve the September 27, 2021 regular council meeting minutes. Councilmember Flores.
Yeah, thank you. And first, I'm sorry for your loss. I'm sorry that you weren't here this last time, clerk. I had left for the bathroom at some point during the meeting. I didn't see that reflected in the minutes. And then I also believe that there were other council members that did as well. So I would motion to postpone this till the next meeting. If the clerk is able to figure out that time that we were gone.
Is this the time when we were about to go into closed session?
No.
Motion is to postpone?
Yeah, postpone until the next meeting.
Next meeting.
There is, oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. There's motion on the floor to postpone, except in the minutes. Is that what I'm hearing?
Just number one, right?
Just number one.
Just number one, to postpone until the next meeting.
Until the next meeting. Just our agenda, what happened at the last meeting. There was some corrections made already, and you should have received those earlier. And Councilman Flores indicated he left the meeting, and that was not reflected in the meeting. And he said others left, and it was not reflected. So he wanted to put those times in there. There's a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
I'm just trying to figure out why, why we need it. I mean, I understand people do get up and use, go to bathroom. But what difference does it make if it's reflected that we went to the bathroom and not?
And it doesn't make any difference other than keeping this intact correctly, given the rules that we have for future people to look at our minutes. If it, if there was a person that left the meeting and it's able to be recorded as we've done for years and years and years before, if somebody's able to take that opportunity and reflect that accurately, I think that's something we owe to the public.
Any other discussion? Yes.
I would just say that this was sent out to us Monday. I mean, we do need to reflect that and be consistent, certainly I'm not disputing that. But just for future reference, if we have changes that need to be made or if we notice this when we receive the minutes, we normally receive the minutes within maybe three days, 72 hours after the meeting. So I'm just thinking for future reference, if council members are noticing this, maybe we can get this to the clerk's office instead of having to make more things to suspend over something that is certainly, you know, needs to be done for consistency, but not really a life or death situation either. So just a thought. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I just do a clarification, Mayor?
Yes.
It comes into play when a council member has left the meeting, if there's going to be a vote taken. That's why we do reflect that in the minutes. And then when that council member returns, we do reflect that in the minutes. That's why it's important to have it noted.
So there's a motion on the floor. Let me deal with that motion, right?
We have a second? Yes.
There's a motion on the floor that we postpone approving our regular council meetings for September 27, 2021. It's been moved in second. I see a number one. It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Okay. Item number five. Approve the trade-in of a 2021 Ford F-250 pickup truck to McDonald Ford for a trade-in value of $28,406. Further, approve the purchase with McDonald Ford for a 2022 Ford F-250 for $29,950 through the municipal vehicle buyback program and for fiscal year 2023 through 2025 pending budget approval for the Public Services Department Motor Pool Division. Councilmember Flores.
Thank you. I can't believe it's almost been a year since we disagreed about this last. With the difference in the amount, is that just another, like, semantic? Where we're writing another check for the buyback program, but it's not gonna be costing us?
Yeah, so what happens is, and I wish the original CC would have been written as such, where we wouldn't have, this is a five-year program. So the intention of the original CC, so we wouldn't have to come back every year, but we noticed, we didn't put the pending future year budgets or the city manager or somebody else has approval to continue to approve that every year for the, for the five-year program. But the difference is, so what happens is, we get the brand-new vehicles. So the first year, we bought it through the governmental price concessions. Ford buys it back from us for the same price we paid for it a year ago. The difference is in that what the, so that, that was a 2021 model. The new model, we're gonna get's a 2022. So whatever the cost is for that vehicle, same type, really no additional adders, just a standard three-quarter ton standard cab pickup. But we have to pay the difference between what that vehicle was purchased at a year ago and what that newer vehicle is this year. So this year, it happens to be about $1,400 or $1,500 for the '22 over the, over the '21. But every year, it fluctuates based on whatever the governmental price concession cost through Ford is to the city at that time. But it should always, I think this year, it's probably a little bit more with the difficulty in getting vehicles right now. Next year, it could be less. But it'll probably vary every year from, you know, maybe even a little less to, you know, $1,000 or $1,500 more than the vehicle the prior year was. And we're putting the order in now, cause it seems, we got that in February. But in order to get it by February or March, we have to put, according to Ford, we have to put the order in now, cause it's gonna be four to six months to get the vehicle.
Yeah, I had read that in the communication. But when you say pay the $1,400, that's just really part of the buyback program?
Yes.
We're not paying.
No, no, no. We have to pay the difference between what the, the new vehicle costs compared to what we originally paid. Cause that's an additional cost through the Ford buyback program. So the way that program works is whatever the governmental price concession is on that new vehicle. So last year, say it was $28,000 for a 2021 Ford. This year, just make it easy, say it's $29,000. Ford's gonna write us a check for 28 to buy that vehicle back. We gotta write them a check for 29 to get the new vehicle. So it's only a difference of $1,000. But we do have to pay that $1,000 difference.
Yet, in the next year, if it is less, like 20, then we would get different.
We'll get, we'll get that. They'll pay, they're gonna pay us 29 back for the truck. So basically, if the new truck's 27, then they'll have to give us a credit of 2,000.
Okay.
It's gonna, you know.
Fluctuate depending on.
So it's always gonna be the difference between what we paid for that vehicle in the governmental price concession and what we paid for the one the year prior.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move to approve consent agenda item number five. I'll support that.
It's been moved in second. Any more discussion? Hearing done, the second vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
No.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have eight yes, one no. Motion is approved. Our next order of business, Mayor, is boards, commission, and committee reports.
Do we have anyone who would like to report on meetings that they attended or board reports or committees?
Yes. I have been attending the, the airport board meeting. And it's not a lot going on, but they do rent the land out around the airport. And they come to find out, we have a new airport director. And they kinda find out that they haven't had a new lease in years. And they're gonna be receiving a lot more money than they used to for the lease of the land. So that, that was a good thing to hear. And they plan on reservicing one of the runways. So they study improving out there. So it's looking good out there. We got other meetings coming up for budget stuff coming up. So that's about all. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one.
Yes.
And please correct me, Madam Clerk, if I'm wrong. Am I able to request that we, just to send a notion of that? I sit on the zoning board appeals, and currently we have not been able to meet due to not having our numbers, having quorum. And so I'm hoping that we can, city, I ask, and if you're interested in joining a board, to please join. Because there are things in our city that we need to meet and accomplish. And because we have rules that affect our city or, that affect our city, we are not able to do anything if our boards are empty. And that affects everything that we do in our city. So if you are interested, if you're available, please look into our open boards and join one.
Thanks, question. How many, how many board members is it on there?
So right now, we're actually approving one, but we need, we're in need of another seat and two alternates.
So how many people you say is on the board?
Right now, I believe there's four. And Amy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it's four.
Our city clerk would know better, but I think, I think it's currently a six-member board.
Six-member boards, and there's two.
And there's four seats filled.
So you gotta have four people. How many people you need for quorum?
Four.
Three, four?
Four.
Okay.
It is so important, council persons, if you're on any board or commission that we attend. Because I've been to meetings where we don't even attend. So if you are tied to a board or commission or a community meeting, it's always nice to go. Because there are major decisions that have to be made, and they can't be made. So until the next month, and the next month, and the next month. And then sometimes we run up on where it's too late. And you can't make a decision without having a quorum. Okay? So that's just for all of us, and I'm included. I must be at meetings just like everybody else. Yes.
And I would just like to ask, and Madam Clerk, even if we can still provide a hybrid option, because a lot of individuals want to serve on boards, but can't necessarily, and I'm including me, because we're back working, we can't come to meetings like we could in the past, whether it was a virtual option or flexibility in a schedule. So if there is an opportunity for some of the boards to have a hybrid option where you can meet in person and virtually, I think that might help some of the individuals who wanna get involved. But also, I'll, I'll just speak for myself.
They have to follow the Open Meetings Act.
Correct.
So it doesn't offer, unless it's a medical reason or military.
Military.
Militar.
You could, right, right now, under the Open Meetings Act, unless there is a local state of emergency or disaster declared, which we do not have in Saginaw County, members of a public body that are subject to the OMA can only attend virtually if they're absent due to a military service or if they have a medical condition that would prevent them from attending in person. That medical condition exception expires December 31st of this year. So starting January 1st, only the military absent would allow boards.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. What we're talking about right now too, for everybody that's watching, is there are, in my belief, three very, three important boards and commissions that actually move business in the city, like the mayor was just talking about. Councilman Copeland mentioned zoning board of appeals. The planning commission is another one. And the other one is the historic district commission. And that, I bring up that entity because they, I think they've got five, Amy? Five is quorum for them too. So if just one.
Four is quorum. They only have four members at the moment.
Okay, that's where they're at right now. But it's important, like, they haven't been able to make quorum either. So they're trying to. able to make quorum either. So they're trying to get things accomplished that need to go to the planning commission based on the motions and things that they are approving. So citizens, if you want to serve on these boards and commissions, call the clerk's office. If you can't find the form, or you, because you actually can fill it out online. So thank you. That's all I'm going to say for right now. But please, 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 get involved.
Anyone else?
Has there been, I apologize, is there any additional information from the Human Rights Board about the Elliott Larson's Act, and if there's any movement from that from the state?
There currently hasn't been any. The last time I've reviewed the proposed bills that affect Elliott Larson, they're still in committee in the state legislature.
All right. Thank you.
But as, most bills that I'm currently tracking for the city on a variety of reasons are still sitting in committee at the state legislature.
So the Michigan Supreme Court is set to review the appeal by the Attorney General at some point. Correct?
There is a case before the Michigan Supreme Court on the question, and they're currently allowing time for amicus briefs to be filed by affected parties on both sides.
And do we know what the timeline would be for that?
I haven't seen a set timeline on the docket.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
Yeah, I just, with all due respect, I would love to talk about that, too. But right now, as part of our agenda, we're under boards and commissions and committees. And I think we would want to bring that up under miscellaneous business. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. No more reports. Madam Clerk?
We are now at appointment of board and commission members.
Can we do them together?
Yes, leaving room for exceptions.
Okay. I need a motion to approve.
So moved, support.
It's been, any comments? It's moved, it's been moved and approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Here we are now at miscellaneous business. Our first item is consideration of a closed session to discuss pending litigation in the Johnson and the Weigant cases, per MCL 15.268, Section E.
So moved to closed session?
Second.
Sorry, who's second?
I need a motion.
Motion to go into closed session?
I need a second. It's been moved in second.
Hold it.
Hold it.
We need a roll call.
That's right. I need a roll call vote. Can we wait one minute before we start?
Can we take the vote and then have people?
Can we do the roll call vote now, please?
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Copeland?
Aye.
Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Nine yes votes, zero nay. Motion is approved for closed session.
I need a motion to return back into open session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Miss Jan. Did you get that?
I believe I did.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk?
I approve the recommendation of legal counsel as discussed in closed session regarding pending litigation in the Johnson and the...
You'll hold it at times.
You got to do one at a time on that one.
Okay. Or do you have a... They're both listed.
Can we do both of them? Okay.
All right. The pending litigation in the Johnson and Weigant case, I probably, did I do that right?
Yeah, you said it.
It's been moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Need a, any other miscellaneous business? I'm sorry. I need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Don't move.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, hearing done? All those in favor. Who moved it? I'm sorry.
And I got it. She got it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.